...of this term for this Board of Aldermen. So, we will begin with the pledge of allegiance. We'll follow that with an invitation by Alderman Sistrup and then a moment of silence. If you would join me please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Sistrup, if you would please.
Thank you. Loving God, thank you for allowing us to gather once more to offer our service to our community. We pray your blessings on those for whom this will be the last meeting in this capacity as they enter the next stage of their lives. Grant us wisdom tonight as we make decisions that those decisions are in the best interest of the community and its future. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right, thank you again everyone. We appreciate you being here this evening. Our first order of business will be approval of the official agenda with the consented items. Do I have any changes to the agenda or consented items? Alderman Moreland?
No ma'am.
Alderman Rupp?
No ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
No ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Sistrup?
Vice Mayor.
Come in, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
May I, ma'am, thank you.
All right, then I need a motion to approve the official agenda with the consented items.
So moved.
Thank you Alderman Rupp, do you have a second?
You're welcome.
Second.
Thank you Alderman Moreland. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries, thank you. All right, I will read the consented agenda items. First is consideration of the minutes of the May 30th, 2025 work session of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. We have consideration of the minutes of the June 3rd, 2025 meeting of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. Then we have the under-mayor's business, consideration of approving Boyd, Lakeside, Ruth, and Sand Creek Roads annexation area's street lighting for fiscal year 2425, and authorization for the mayor to sign the agreement with four county EPA. The is consideration for resolution authorizing the liens for 117 Clements Avenue and 2400 Douglas MacArthur Drive as provided in the attachments. Under airport, we have number one, request approval to purchase aviation fuel filters and gaskets from Titan Aviation at the lowest quote in the amount of $5,168.80 plus shipping. We have consideration of approving the lower bid from Pace Excavation in the amount of And any FAA approved alternate bid related to Phase One runway 1836 extension subgrade based drainage and related improvements funded from the FAA 2025 AIP grant for George M. Bryan Field. Under community development, we have consideration of reappointing Kurt Gaudet, Ward Two, George Seals, Ward Four, and Bill Webb, Ward Six, to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Under engineering, we have consideration of approving a professional services proposal with Burns Dirt Construction, Inc. for bi-weekly drone flights for the Main Street Improvements Project for the not to exceed amount, not to exceed contract amount of $10,800. Under two, we have consideration of approving a professional services proposal with Arch Tektronix for the as-needed construction administration services for the Main Street Improvements Project for the hourly not to exceed contract amount of $10,000. Number three is consideration of approval of amendment number two of the 2025 street improvement list, which removes milling and overlaying Spring Street between Highway 12 and Russell Street due to the city being awarded a transportation alternative, TA grant, and adds patching and overlaying portions of East Garrett Road and Pat Station Road due to emergency slope and culvert repairs. Then we have acceptance of the May financial statements. We have approval of the fiscal year '25 budget adjustments. Under the fire department, we've got request permission for LaShonda R. Malone to attend the Emergency Services Administrative Professionals Association Conference on September the 2nd through the 5th, 2025 in Biloxi, Mississippi with advanced travel, not to exceed $900. Under HR, we have number one, request authorization to Hallie Powers as a full-time, to hire Hallie Powers as a full-time dispatcher in the Starkville Police Department. Two is request authorization to hire Benjamin Davis as a lineman in the Starkville Utilities Department. Three is request authorization to hire Noah Wolf as a lead landscape worker in the sanitation and environmental services department. Four is request authorization to hire Rachel Cockroft as an executive administrative assistant in the Starkville Utilities Department. Under IT, we have request approval of purchase of five cameras from Security Solutions for the police department camera project for the lowest quote of $21,260. Under parks, we have consideration of approving a professional services proposal with Arch Tektronix for the design, bidding, and construction administration for the J.L. King Pavilion for the hourly not to exceed amount of $13,800. Number two is consideration of rejecting the construction bids received for the Starkville Parks signage project and re-advertising the project. Three is consideration of approving change order number five for the McKee Park Improvement Project in the amount of a $59,801.41 increase with Ethos Contracting Group, which includes additional entrance road pavement repairs as well as handrails and guardrails to meet ADA code. Under utilities, we have consideration of approving grant number 23-00067, modification number one, to close the MDEQ MOA for the EV charging stations. Number two is consideration of approving an advertisement for outage management system, OMS, proposals for Starkville Utilities. Three is consideration of approving an advertisement for supervisory control and data acquisition, SCADA system, proposals for Starkville Utilities. And four is approval of low quote for consolidated pipe supply for materials to replace a section of 16-inch force main in the amount $41,484. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you Mayor.
I'm happy to do that. And then we have next our announcements and comments. And I get to make an announcement of something that happened today that was really pretty cool. I'm gonna pull it up so I get it right, y'all will excuse me. Today, we were in a Main Street Association meeting, and I'm gonna look for it and I'm gonna find it when I'm able to, which is gonna be really perfect. But, um, we want, the city of Starkville, Main Street, won three awards, and as I said, I was gonna try to read them to you, but since I can't find them, I'm not gonna. Oh wait a minute, hold it, hold it, I may have them. Nope, I don't, all right. Nope, yeah, I do, I do, I do. Okay, cool. Wait a minute, it's cool, though, it's cool. So, we won the premier partner, large community making Maine merry award. We won the outstanding community education campaign for a large community, and we won the outstanding project promotion for the guest rooms Miracle Under Maine and Santa Surf Shack Award. So, it was really pretty cool. So, the Starkville came out with three nice awards from the Main Street Association, which always makes us feel good because people recognize some of the work we're trying to do in making Starkville place where people wanna be. We were gonna talk about the air race, but unfortunately Starkville got left off the air race for a stop because of the weather. So, we know that weather impacts flying, and in this case, to our sadness, maybe they'll add us next time. We also had some very successful, a very successful tournament last weekend, the Dizzy Dean Tournament was, had a full cornerstone. I talked to a lot of people who said I spent all weekend out at Cornerstone and it was great. So, that was, that's one of the things I always like to highlight. And now more importantly, I do wanna highlight, this is the last meeting for two of our aldermen who have served with distinction, Alderman Rupp and Alderman Beatty. And both of you, I put little blue bows on your nameplates so you can take them with you when you go as a part of the year. But, we wanna thank you for your service because public service is a, is an important thing. And it is, well, whether you always like the way things turn out or not, it still is something that the citizens, I think, appreciate. They voted you in for a reason, and it matters that you participated on their behalf in a very affirmative way. So, I wanna thank you personally, and thank you on behalf of the city, and I'm sure the other board members will say the same, but I will also thank you on behalf of the board, and certainly all the department heads and all the city staff who worked with you because over the years, it has been, it has been a pleasure. So, thank you, thank you both, and we will, we will miss you. Alderman Moreland, anything?
No ma'am.
Alderman Rupp?
Yes ma'am, thank you. Well, obviously I have a few thank yous. All the city employees, I think they are unheralded and don't get the credit they deserve. That's also a tribute to all the department heads. I can't think of one time when I called a department head and didn't get a prompt professional response. All of you are just fantastic, I appreciate that. Board members, I think I've learned a lot for better for worse from all of you, and I have nothing but respect for you, and it's been an honor to serve with you, and especially you Mayor, and of course the folks at home, it has certainly been an honor to serve. I truly believe in public service. And Kyle, if you have any questions about anything along the way, call me unless you're in trouble with the mayor, then I don't wanna hear from you. You're on your own, so good luck to you.
Thank you. Alderman Brooks?
I do have a few thoughts here, Mayor, as we wrap up this, these four years. You know, I'm certainly proud of everything we were able to accomplish, but I'm also excited about the things that we've got, you know, to look forward to. And with your help, earlier in the year, you know, we came up with like three pages worth of things we've done, and I'm not about to read all of those, but we wanna get out of here sometime tonight. But, you know, some of the highlights were, of course, the bonds for the city streets, the sewer service to the annex areas from 1998, the completing the annexation process, getting Cornerstone open. And I think that, you know, if you look at our latest sales tax numbers, that probably has a lot to do with that big increase that we've got there, along with the Cornerstone, along with the triangle crossing, the security cameras we've been able to put throughout the city, and we're approving some more tonight, the bond issued for the parks, and I'm proud to say that, you know, we did complete the Nebores Center. We started and completed it during these, during this term. The grant money for the Main Street project and the Highway 82, 182 project, both of those are underway. That's stuff that, you know, that we will be looking forward to over the next term. The ARPA funds we spent for, for all the sewer replacement, sewer and water upgrades. One of my favorites is the traffic signals on Lewisville Street, I did push for that. And again, tonight, we mentioned the extension of the Starkville Airport, and that, you know, that's right a thousand feet to that airport, to the runway, which will allow us to get larger jets in. Not to bore you with airport details, but, you know, we, we need that longer length for the bigger jets to come in, and with Mississippi State's events, a lot of these planes now are going to Golden Triangle, so that'll get them here, you know, spend money here and buy fuel here, so that's, that's a, that's a major gain for us. And I mentioned the triangle crossing. And one of my favorites was passing the golf cart ordinance, so, you know, that was a, that was a major, major step we did there. But, you know, some of those were game changers, some of them were just minor tweaks, but anyway, we, we, I'm proud to say that we got those things started and underway now. And if you'll just indulge me a few more minutes, I want some of the things I've learned during these four years. And, you know, I truly believe this current board, all of us different, but we all had one vision, and that was that, you know, we just wanted Starkville to be the best it could be. And everybody worked toward that goal, and we didn't always agree on how we were gonna get there, but, but we, we voted, and we left here, and we were friends, and we, we came back to, to, for the next meeting, and everybody was, you know, red goat, pushed toward that same goal. And, you know, my fellow alderman, you know, I've known Alderman Moreland for over thirty years. She and my daughter grew up together, they went to school together, played ball together, and now you don't tell me what else they did together that I don't know about, but I'm sure it was some things. But, I served with her on P and Z, and I knew from, from that time on P and Z that when she got here, she'd throw herself into this job 110%, and, and I was exactly right, she has. And I, I've got to tell you how impressed I am with your working knowledge of the city, and I know you'll just continue to move forward in that, and I'm looking forward to another term with you. Alderman Sistrup, obviously, you know, like everybody else, I'm amazed with your budgeting and expertise, and, you know, not only the board of Alderman, but the whole city is better off, you know, just for your, just very lucky that, you know, we had you here to run these numbers for us. And anytime you ask her, "Well, how does that get paid for?", and she'll tell you where it came from somewhere in there, you know. So, I'm, I'm an MSU accounting grad, and I'll tell you, she's forgotten more about budget than I ever knew, because that wasn't something I wanted to do. But, she is an expert at it, we're lucky to have her. Vice Mayor Perkins, I met him when I was serving on P and Z, and, and you gotta ask this question, is there a more cordial person than, than Vice Mayor Perkins? Unless, of course, you know, you need to be straightened out a little bit, and then he can certainly use the law and tactfully get you back on the right course. And, and I truly appreciate your knowledge and experience, and we're lucky to have you on the board and all your years of experience, and you'll serve us well going into the next term. Alderman Vaughn, I probably met you thirty years ago, if you remember, your sons coached my, my son's flag football team. I sponsored the team, and they were, and I kinda stacked the deck on that because I knew, I knew that Alderman Beatty would, would do a good job, and they also had a younger brother too that was like the fastest running back in town, so, anyway. But that, I met, I met Alderman Vaughn then, and before I got, I can say busy, but probably lazy, I used to meet him in the gym every morning, we would work out in the gym, so. His, his passion for the city is evident, and certainly he has been a pleasure, and I'm looking forward to another four years, Alderman Vaughn. Now, just a few more, I gotta say a few words about these two bookings I've got right here now. Alderman, Alderman Beatty, I think my first interaction with you was probably, I was on P and Z and you were on the historic progressive committee?
Correct.
You, you had something you brought to us, and I could tell then, you know, you, you had, had a passion for the city too, and you're kinda like a bulldog, once you got a hold of something, you don't try to lose. We kinda know that from some of our work sessions, but anyway, I have enjoyed serving with you, and you, don't be a stranger, call me anytime if you need an HP 12 Cigar Bar, I've always got one or two laying around. Now, the last guy here, so, say the best for last, right? We, we came on the board at the same time, and I, I'd met Alderman Rupp just briefly, and he brought something in front of us on P and Z, but I didn't really know him, kinda felt like I did, his, his older running buddy, the other Jeff, the Jeff and the, was a friend of mine, we went to school together, so I felt like I should know him, but I really didn't know him. But, anyway, we, we got to know each other, we were, you know, we were rookies, but he really wasn't a rookie, I was the rookie. He had been a mayor and had all this experience, political experience. So, when we first got elected, I think he was just trying to shepherd me along, make me get pointed in the right direction, and we'd meet for coffee and just to discuss city needs or what was on the agenda. And, and, you know, we began to get to know each other, and I consider us good friends now, and, and also got to know your lovely wife, and your beautiful daughters, and, you know, our daughters are friends. And, as a matter of fact, along those lines, doing some math here, so my wife is about, we're, we're the same age, you're like one month older. And my wife's like, "Yeah, you're one month older."
Yeah, you're a lot older.
No, one month. He's the older of the two of us. And, you know, my wife's like five years younger than me, and I found out that she babysat his wife when she was younger. So, I'm not, I'm not insinuating you rob the cradle, but I will say this after meeting, you might have outkeep your coverage a little bit.
Call for the question?
Yeah, so, anyway.
I'm waiting.
But anyway, and I'll say this, I have certainly enjoyed this, these four years in, in the board, just together, I see Alderman Skinner, elect Skinner out there, and you've been to some meetings lately, and you've seen we, we all get along, and we, we, you know, we just want the city going forward in the right direction. Looking forward to working with you, and...
Can I be in this group too?
Yes, ma'am. I wouldn't go say anything about you Mayor.
Smart man. Thank you.
It's like, like Alderman Rupp says, don't get cocked up, you know, ma'am. Don't say anything, but thank you for your service too, Mayor.
Thank you Alderman Brooks. I'm sorry, were you?
I am.
You did, all right, thank you sir. Alderman Beatty?
Very short, Mayor. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve Ward Five and my Ward Five constituents in the city of Starkville the past six years. As I've served, I hope that I've been worthy of your confidence and respect during this time period. It's been, it's truly an honor. When I left Newton twenty years ago, Newton, Mississippi, and I'd served as a public official down there, I thought, you know, I'll never do this again. And I got this unique honor, privilege to come back, say, say, play it again Sam, and get elected, and to serve half of an unexpired term of a gentleman who left and went to, from here to the Gulf Coast, and then full term. So, I've served six years, and that's, that's just been an awesome experience for me to get to not only serve again, but get to serve in a different place and see different things with a different perspective, you know, from, from my former hometown. But, again, I, I've enjoyed working with, with the board and with the mayor, and sometimes I don't, I'm not to agreeable, sometimes I have a strong opinion on things, and that's just, that's just the way I'm, that's my makeup, that's the way I'm made. And, but anyway, it's, it's been, these professionals up here, and the new two, two new people coming on are gonna do a great job, I know, and I just wanna, I'll thank citizens, City Stark, it's been just, just an unbelievable experience and opportunity for me to, to do this. So, thank you again.
Thank you Alderman Beatty. Alderman Sistrup?
Just briefly, I will echo what the mayor said about public service and what she said and most of what Alderman Brooks said about Alderman Rupp and Alderman Beatty. Want to wish you both Godspeed as you move along to whatever's next for you. Don't be strangers.
Thank you Mayor. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I guess I need to just say very briefly, wanna wish my two distinguished outgoing colleagues, the gentleman from three, Alderman Rupp, and the gentleman from five, Alderman Beatty, the best of success in their future endeavor or endeavors. And finally, Mayor, let me just take this moment to thank my remaining colleagues. Wanna congratulate our honorable mayor on her third term, third term during my eight terms on the board. I've served five mayors, and I said all that to say that serving a third term as mayor is unprecedented, and of the five mayors, this is my first mayor that I have the opportunity to serve three terms with. Very quickly, I'm not gonna take much time, though I was getting, growing, we've had the two, three, two-term mayors, Mayor Rich from '97, Mayor to 2005, Mayor Wiseman from 2009 to 2017, and then I was truly on her third term coming up. And I wanna also congratulate the returning colleagues, the Alderman, the senior Alderman Ward, one was just re-elected to her first full term, the distinguished and honorable budget chair, who's serving starting July 1st to her fourth unconsecutive term, the gentleman from four, gonna be his second consecutive term, and welcome the new members. And last but not least, the gentleman from seven, started in 2009, as of July 1st, I have it right, he's going to his fifth term. And, and all of you know how many terms I am going into, which is my ninth term, so just wanted to say that. And it's been a great team, department heads have done a very remarkable job, Mayor, so I just thought I needed to say something. And so, we just gonna take one second at a time and keep moving forward with our city in the very best way that we possibly can. Mayor Yeo, thank you.
Thank you, thanks Mayor. Alderman Vaughn?
Yes ma'am, ma'am. Thank you to Alderman, to former mayors, it was a good, good ride. I learned a lot from you because some things I didn't understand. I know Jeffrey had been a mayor, and Hemp had been a mayor, and I always would call them by some things, but it's been a great, great work with you. This board, I thank you so much for allowing me sometime, I'll go another way, but that's the way God built me. My, my decision, I still love everybody, even though the decision I make don't, don't make everybody happy. But, I think I've been doing the right decision because I've been, actually, Holy Spirit has guided me, and that's the way it take me, and that's the way it take me. And Hemp and Jeffrey, you and I just a phone call away. Y'all know I call you all, all the time, and I will still continue to call you. This board have done a lot, we achieved a lot, and we still got a long ways to go. How you, Mayor?
Thank you Alderman Vaughn. All right, that was, that was lovely, thank you all. Next, we have citizens' comments. You have three minutes in which to express some thoughts, concerns, compliments to the board. Mr. Turner, always lovely to see you.
Reunion to the men, my name is Alvin Turner Warner. Seven, to the mayor, to police chief, to fire chief, to sanitation. All right, we wanna thank you all for bringing Wood Street back to life. We appreciate that. Dean, project on 182, we, we have all female bus drivers in our, the construction, our, they, our, have to sometimes drive two and three routes in, 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 with the construction, and our, we, we, they, they're tearing up a lot of tires because they run, have to run over the curb because they, they have to get served, they have to get the, uh, wash do it, they have to get to Armstrong, they have to get to Starve High. They be rolling, they be doing the best they can, but, uh, wanna be safe because they carrying precious cargo, fifty-plus female drivers, and, uh, we just wanna be safe about it. Also, we, we, people wanna pretend to be the police, like we, we need to, uh, know, uh, the pretender from the real, work badge and all that stuff, because we getting in dangerous time.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else under citizens' comments? Anyone else? Okay, thank you sir. If you'd state your name, please.
Good evening, my name is Milton Smith. Thank y'all for letting me have a few moments of your time. I was coming to talk to you concerning the borrow pit at 1420. I'm a resident of Starkville, Mississippi, been here most of my life. We own properties at 850 Pat Station Road, 870 Pat Station Road, 890 Pat Station Road, right across the street from the Burns Dirt Pit right now.
Mr. Smith, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we do have a public hearing on the borrow pit, so if you'd like to wait until that point in time?
I can.
You can certainly do that. I mean, you've got three minutes here, but that's a public hearing that will be held.
Oh, I can.
Okay. All right. Well, why don't we just do that, and that way you'll be officially under that particular agenda item, if that's okay?
All right.
All right, thank you sir. Anyone else wishing to speak under citizens' comments?
I'm Bernie Shelton, Tommy Lee's daughter. I missed last week, I mean month.
I'm sorry, would you say your name again?
Bernie Shelton, I'm Tommy Lee's daughter. I missed last month, and I wanna forgive for that, but I didn't know what day the code did.
What was, what was it that you were here for, Ms. Shelton?
For the code.
The code?
For Tommy Lee and Sabala Louise Lee Hocken.
Oh, yeah, okay, yes ma'am.
Highway 12 West, Starve Miss.
Yes ma'am. That gentleman right there needs to talk to you, he'll help you.
Okay, well, that's what I wanna know.
Yes ma'am, all right.
I see.
Thank you, yes ma'am. Anyone else under citizens' comments? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will close it under citizens' comments. And we have next a public appearance, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson is here under highway, the Highway 182 construction and entrance to Touch of Love Barber and Beauty Shop. Mr. Johnson, you have ten minutes, so.
Thank you.
And Ms. Harden will, will time you, will give you some, a heads up for, for when it's starting to run out.
Okay, thank you. My name is Larry Johnson, on a Touch of Love Barber and Beauty Salon on the corner 82, uh, 249 Dr. Martin Luther King. This is my third time coming up here, and I appreciate the board for listening to me. Last two times I came up here, I probably sounded real angry because I was, I was, I was hot. Well, I'm, I'm here to talk about accessibility to my business. I opened in 1994. From 1994 to this present date. This project is about beautification. From 1994 to now, the drainage is your own off 182, the maintenance of the grass... of the grass, all of that, been taken care of by me. Every time I came to the city, the city would say it was the state. The state would say it was the city. Well, November twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, it was turned over to the city, so I know who has it now, and y'all demonstrated y'all strength. I mean, y'all took over, took half the parking lot. All of it, closed one of my entrances. The purpose of having a corner lot, corner lots are highly sought after in business due to their high visibility, dual access, making them ideal for attracting customers and maximizing potential for revenue to increase the exposure and potential for larger signage and significantly boost the business in present that's been taken away from me. There's no need to have a corner lot if you don't have dual access. They say it's for safety. I guess Dr. Martin Luther King has to be the safest place in Starkville because I look at Highway twelve, all those businesses have corner access. I've been riding around and just looking. I have a high-ranking official at Mississippi State, and he asked me one day, he said, "Look, you know, construction around here been taking a long time." He was talking about the corner of twelve, twelve and corner of Blackjack Road. I was like, "Yes, sir, it's taking the time, but they gonna do it right." But I looked at that this morning, new sidewalks, everything they put in. But one thing they didn't do, they didn't take that access away. I looked, rolled down twenty-five, Highway twenty-five, that's been redone. I saw where no one's access has been limited on the corners. That's the purpose of having a corner lot, is access. Parking lot is smaller. I drive a twenty-five-hundred truck. Every time I turn out, I have to be super careful now because I have to turn out real tight. The sight lines, they say it was a mistake. You said it was a mistake by the information that you put on the city's website. That's what I went by. Well, I guess it's wrong too because that curb hasn't been cut out the way it's supposed to be. You check the sight lines on it, it's not right. I noticed on Roosevelt, the city took over from Taylor Street all the way down to Old Westport Road. I guess they not gonna ride bikes or whatever on the sidewalk from Roosevelt to Jones because the street, sidewalks from there are six feet. You turn around, they turn to twelve feet in front of my business because they want the trees to look good, I guess. It's amazing that they can be six feet here and then the next street out, and you just jump to the intersection, they turn to twelve. Why is that? We here to, how I standing at that barber shop or something? I feel like, I don't know. I don't know how to feel, to be honest. When I first came, I know if there's problems there where the police have to intervene, it was a conflict. I came in April first, talking about the police and my access, and I told, I was told that he was not a babysitter. Now, me and the chief, we had a good conversation. We, like he said, he told the media, I'm gonna quote him right because I don't wanna say it wrong. And, let me see. The chief said, "There are some things that I would disagree with him about." He said, "The training of our officers is one of the highs in the state already. We do a tremendous amount of de-acceleration training. The wording was wrong, but it is what it is. It is what it is. Human beings are going to make mistakes, and I think that we have, what we have there, we apologize, we've learned, and we move on." A lot of people feel like I have something against the police. I don't. When Stabah PD got their first national accreditation, I don't want to business owners that they call. I spoke very highly of the city of Starkville. Like I told y'all last I was up here, when y'all opened that driveway up, it's like y'all spitting my face. Everything I talked to the police chief about, the things that he didn't wanna talk about, he hid behind a turtleneck. See, I could talk to him about anything. He said, "Well, you know, I've been advised by the city of Turner not to say this, not to say that." I understand how it goes, but the city of Starkville don't know how much I don't help Stabah PD in so many occasions, so many. But, like I say, I guess on Martin Luther King, we got to be held to a high standard. Like, that just might be me. It hurt, it, Starkville really hurt me. Talking about beautification and safety when everybody else has access that we don't. We go about, in my opinion, because I'm glad Ms. Carr got a driveway because she should have access it. But I have elderly people come up there all the time, now they have to go up a hill, it's blind. When I talked to them when they first started this, they told me they were gonna cut the hill down. They didn't do it. The leadership, it falls on, under the mayor. Now, to me, that's a major mistake you made, putting that information on the city's website with a thirty-five million dollar project. It should be no mistake made. Thirty-five million, well, I'm just a poll contributor, I might, you know, that might be over my head, but I know with a thirty-five million dollar project, what else been cut short or done wrong that we don't know about? Because like I said, we got, like I said, that site plan, where that curb is, that curb is supposed to be cut differently where it is. But then they put five-foot sidewalks right there. There are five on one side, six on the other, six right there from Jones to Taylor. But we gotta have these bike lanes for everybody else, I guess. I guess best part of the city that you don't need are bike lanes. You just walk right there. Is there certain areas of the city that's held to a higher standard than others? Then I noticed the construction on twelve, when you put the curb in here and took out all the left turns, that construction was done at night. Yeah, construction cost more at night, I know. I'm not the smartest person in the world, but I know construction costs more at night. But all the construction on eighty-two, they gonna do it when they want to. Even when my parking lot got cut down to size, all the city trucks come in, they take over the parking lot, they have to act, people to move. When they want to, they cut, shut, stop the traffic on eighty-two. I had so many parents come to me and said, "Thank you for saying something." It's like the police and the city didn't care. Traffic was bagged up too far. Because me personally, it's about more than me. I'm up here for everybody else because I got clients for every award, install. My pastor, he came one Monday, bad meat. I had to go out and move barricades for him to get to the barber shop, and he still had a piece to walk. I was embarrassed, but you know, my pastor, he, he's not gonna complain. I had the A.D. from Mississippi State, Zack, he came to get a haircut. He had to walk around up from Jones apartment. I was embarrassed because, you know, that's the purpose of having a corner lot for access. I just came out a few minutes ago.
One minute, sir.
I appreciate it, like I say. I don't, I don't know what y'all gonna do, but the purpose of having a corner access, corner lot is for access, where my access is. Do y'all feel y'all treating my business right? Now, I can't speak for matters across the street, I don't speak for me or mine. My clients deserve better. In the city of Starkville, y'all should get my clients better. My access should be open to eighty-two to protect my people, y'all people. Because we are the city of Starkville, that's what we claim. We always talk about these national awards. The chief said, you know, we got the highest training in the state, but that ain't what they said when they wanted that national accreditation.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next, we'll move on to our public hearings. We have, the first public hearing is a special exception twenty-five dash zero-three. Mr. Havilun?
This is S.T. twenty-five dash zero-three.
Oh, thank you.
This is the request by Starkville Octavia School District to allow for the placement of manufactured homes in several areas on the west side of Sand Road and an R-end zoning district on Sixteenth Section property. This map shows the proposed leasing areas along Sand Road. It's along the west side, which is Sixteenth Section. The red dashed line that you see going around the whole area, that is the outline of the Sixteenth Section. The east side of Sand Road is not within that Sixteenth Section. The red areas are part of this request. That's the areas that we build in, will be allowed to place manufactured homes as a school leasable. The green areas are areas that already been previously approved to have a manufactured home. The area that's being purposely left out of this is what's considered Area A. It is the very top where it's technical. But it's the very top right of the thing. You can see where the arrow is pointing to it. That area is not included as part of this request. This, if this request is approved, there will be no more areas available for manufactured homes along the west side of Sand Road. The request was noticed in accordance with the UDC, seven property owners of record received letters in the mail, and a legal ad was published on May twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and a sign posted on the property in a conspicuous location. And as of this date, we've received no response to the notification. And with all special exceptions, there are eight criteria for review and approval, and it's June eleventh Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval.
Okay. And to go back to your red and green picture, the red is all things that will be available for that use.
Correct. And that is, that is, those lots are areas is what was provided by the school district and that we put it in our GIS system and color coded.
Okay, all right. Any questions to Mr. Havilun before, uh, okay, I'll see Alderman Vaughn's hand first.
So, Daniel, it won't be a case-by-case coming toward the board going forward, correct?
Yes, and previously what had happened is they would lease to an applicant, then the applicant would be responsible to come in here on an individual basis and get approval for that individual lot. And so this just does it on the front end where they have approval for all of it, and then they can just lease it to the applicant. That way, when the applicant signs the lease, they can just proceed with the process of placing manufactured homes.
And they will still have some type of process to come to the city to make sure that inspections?
I don't necessarily deal with that, but I believe the only thing they have to do is, once they place it, and then there's a power pole put in there, and then they have to have the state fire marshal put a sticker on it with an inspection.
Okay, thank you.
And trailers, which are mobile homes, have to have, they have to be within ten years old, is that correct?
Yeah, manufactured homes.
Manufacture, I'm sorry, manufactured.
Manufactured homes, they cannot be any older than ten years when they're brought into the city.
Okay, so we do have some restrictions.
And they have, they have all that information at the school district court of leasing.
All right, thank you. Alderman Brooks?
So, I was trying to count, was how many spots, how many lots, or if you had counted?
I haven't counted.
But I noticed that there are a lot of them different sizes, some of them relatively small. You know what that's all about? These are lots that?
They're, they all beat the minimum size of the one acre.
I count twenty-five, if that helps.
But it was just with them and their surveyor, their land manager and their surveyor, the ones who created these lots. I don't know what the restrictions were other than the width, but I don't know the reason you did that.
Yeah, I'm just looking at this one, yeah. Okay, so twenty-five million is like Alderman Vaughn said, so we're done with that, and they, we print this, and they'll take care of it.
Theoretically, it's the last of them.
Anyone else before opening this public hearing? Okay. I mean, open a just public hearing, anyone wishing to speak either for or against, now would be your opportunity, either for or against, this special exception. All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Oh, Alderman Vaughn?
Mr. Vaughn?
Hi, thank you, how are you, sir? Doing great. Timothy Vaughn, of course, the Sixteenth Section land for the land overseer for the school district. Just to speak to you, Alderman Brooks, every parcel land, when the leasing brings in the application to lease the property, will be resurveyed to a two-acre lot.
Okay.
Okay? And that's for State Health Department, okay? Now, these, these sizes here, I know there's random sizes, that's what we had, as Daniel stated, but I'm getting everything resurveyed, I have an official survey on each parcel of land, and it will be a minimum of two acres.
Good, that sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you, any question?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
If I may, since Dr. Vaughn is here, I just wanted to tell you that I think this greatly simplifies the process for your prospective leases, and I applaud y'all for being proactive about this. Thank you for your good work.
All right, thank you. All right, if there's no one else, I will close it as a public hearing. And any other questions, Mr. Havilun, or any other? Okay, I need a motion.
Move approval.
I have a motion to approve from Alderman Vaughn. Do I have a second? Second from Alderman Sistrunk, I heard? If you would, let me see, no further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, next we have a public, a public hearing in consideration of special exception twenty-five dash zero-five. This is the borrow pit, so it will be amended for you. Wait till I call for a public hearing, sir.
S.E., S.E. twenty-five dash zero-three, this is a, whoops, sorry, S.E. twenty-five dash zero-five. This is the request by Burns Dirt to allow for a borrow pit at four-twenty Pat Station Road in an R-end zoning district. And so you can see where it's located on the map, the property that does about eighty-two and then to the northeast of the bus Pat Station Road. The applicant is seeking the special exception to allow to operate a borrow pit, which is only the second time this type of request has come forward, and it was in a similar area, it was a little bit further to the west. And as you can see on the map, it's shown, they've indicated where the entrance would be, and then there's a stockpile that's a couple hundred feet off of the entrance. That's where they would store the dirt prior to it being loaded onto a truck to be transported. The green line is their hall road, and then the orange area at the bottom is the actual area they'll be digging. And that area, when they're done digging, will become part of a pond that you can sort of make out just to the north of the orange area. And so the trees and stuff that are between that and the adjacent property to the east will remain, they have it indicated they're gonna cut in trees along eighty-two, so for a visibility standpoint, it shouldn't be too visible. The request was noticed in accordance with the UDC, thirteen property owners of record were notified by mail, and a legal ad was published on May twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. As of this date, the planning offices have received one phone call against the request and one phone call requesting information. And with all special exceptions, the eight criteria for review and approval, and it's June eleventh, Planning and Zoning Commission, they voted unanimously to recommend approval. If there are any questions?
Okay, any questions to Mr. Havilun? Alderman Vaughn, I see your hand.
Are there restrictions on times of digging for people that live in that area?
Um, I believe it would be, just following our?
Seven to, yeah, seven to nine.
Standard ordinance.
Seven, I was just wondering.
No midnight digging.
Okay.
All right, any other, any other questions? Alderman Vaughn?
How far is this from residential?
From the nearest house, I'm really not sure.
Can we tell, is it, is it visible on this mound?
There may be some kind of residential to the right there, but I don't know where that house could be. There's a pretty large tract out there, but there are some, maybe there's a house up near Pat Station Road, there's like a small farming operation up there, Green House thing. But it's, it's not heavily populated in that area. There are some residents that their property does touch it. And some of those residents were at the P and Z meeting expressing their concerns for what was going on.
Okay. Anything else, Alderman Vaughn?
It doesn't have to be here at properly, you know, I just, because somebody still live there, that's what I'm saying, it don't have to be here at properly.
Yeah.
I don't imagine that?
Alderman Vaughn?
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna say, I don't imagine that the, the pit would be much noisier than what's already on that site. I don't see that. That was what Alderman Vaughn was asking about with the residents. I don't think digging in that would be much noisier than what's already there now.
What is currently going on, what's there now? Mr. Havilun?
Is this not where they're?
This is where Paul Rose?
Alderman, I have a question to Mr. Havilun. What's going on there right now, do you know?
I don't believe there's anything going on there, that's my knowledge.
Okay, all right. Alderman Beatty, you want to?
Well, I know it's the same site that I can get, I guess I can get orientation or something on it. This is further, okay. Or in?
This is, you're talking about the other operation that Burns has. That's, you can see the bridge right there where it's just Pat Station Road just to the left of that. If you go under that bridge, a couple hundred yards, then that operation would be on the right. right.
Okay. Okay. All right. Anything else before I open for a public hearing? All right. Well, is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Would you like to, well, hang on just a second. Let me, let me get the applicant to, to come up. Do you have anything you wish to add, sir?
I don't.
Okay. And, and your name is?
Val Phillips.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. All right. Now I'll open it as a public hearing. Now, sir, come right on up. Mr. Smith, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, how you doing? My name is Milton Smith and I have concerns about the Burns, the borrow pit at fourteen-twenty. Mayor, we've talked before on, about the, the other point he's talking about on this side of Pat Station Road. You stayed with grandfathered in. I understand that. Mayor, I've stayed where the bridge goes across Pat Station. That's where I grew up at. I've been in that area for over fifty years. We didn't ask to come in the city. City came out to us. Now I have a business in front of my house. I've sent Mr. Bailey video before six-thirty. I'm retired. My wife just had a stroke. She's retired. My daughter's graduated. Ain't no sleeping in late because you hear dump trucks slamming up and down. Once they go to breaking up concrete, like they pile up concrete, you can't wash your car. All the dust comes in the house. You can't watch TV because you hear it outside. You can't go to my shop and do no work because all the dust comes in there. It's like they in the shop. Now the burn pit, now the borrow pit down the road, yes, it's populated down there. We have a nursery down, a little farm down there, Pam Davis, the whole Davis clan stay down there. Yes, it's populated. Our road gets beat up by trucks going up and down. My concern is, I got a whole business in front of my house. I can't enjoy no retirement. Only time it was quiet was when COVID was here. That's the only time it's been quiet. Or a holiday, and they rarely have holidays. They start before six, around six o'clock. Yes, ma'am?
I understand. Yes, sir. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
But, but, but I understand it's, it's six-thirty to nine, but most businesses in the installer closed before nine o'clock. My thing is, do the citizens have a say of where they stay? Because this wouldn't be nowhere else in the city. I've been there long enough to know Joe Leonard stayed across the street from me. Mr. Joe Leonard stayed back behind him. Jim Pear stayed up the hill. Man the Towns stayed up on the other side. That's how long I've been in the area. I feel like my thoughts and our property, no matter, we own three properties right across the street from Burns Dirt. Everybody say, where you stay? I say, right. When you leave town, look for the dirt path. We got three houses across from the dirt path. Ain't no quiet time at my house unless it's after twelve o'clock. That's my concern. And I, and we have some other guys, I don't know if they came today, but we have a genuine, a genuine concern of, we want to be part of the city. We want a quiet like it is down South Montgomery. We want a quiet. They don't have it down there. All these places in the county, they can move rock here, wherever. But we, if we're gonna be in the city, let us be in the city. Let us have some quiet time like everybody else. I've seen, like I said, I've sent Mr. Bailey video. I've sent you video. I've sent Mr. Pochettio video. I'm speaking on, on behalf of eight-fifty, eight-seventy, eight-ninety, Pam Davis, and everybody that stays all the way down to the, the nursery he talking about. We tired of trucks. That's a road tore up now. Not because of cars, because all you see is dirt trucks, dirt trucks up and down the road. They building up concrete right now. When they start breaking up that concrete, all you see is dust. And what's in concrete? Silk in the air. I'm not walking out the house no mask at my house. And shouldn't have to at my house. Like I say, I'm fifty-six years old and I've been on that road for fifty-six years. If anybody should be grandfathered in, I think we should be grandfathered in, the folks that stayed on that road, instead of businesses that come in, tear up the road and, and the quality of health and air up and down the road. I'd like to sleep in late, too. We'd like to sleep in late. We'd like to sleep in past eight o'clock. Can't do it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else is a public hearing? All right. Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. So we do have in, in front of us, we have the consideration of S E twenty-five dash zero five. Do I have a motion?
Can we discuss this?
Let me get a motion, yeah, in a second and we'll discuss it. Okay. Do I have a motion? Well, then we don't discuss it because we don't have a motion to do anything about.
All we need is discussion.
Well, there's nothing discussed. We don't have any way forward.
If it moves the process forward, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Maybe one of my colleagues will second. We'll open this thing up and talk about it.
Do you want to make a motion to deny?
I'll make a vote. I'll, I'll make a motion to deny, to deny.
Okay. I have a motion to deny from Alderman Bailey. Do I have a second?
Sir?
I have a second from Alderman Vaughn. All right. Discussion. Alderman Bailey.
This facility that Burns Dirt has, is using, where they bring concrete refuse from highways and MSU, tore down MSU building, pulverized from sunup to sundown, it ruined Mr. Smith's quality of life. I've been...
This is about the borrow pit?
I know. But I'm, I'm, I'm talking about, while we, we talking about Burns Dirt and stuff, this, it's ruined quality of life, this man's. How long, Mr. Smith, how long you live out there?
Fifty-six years. We started, we started with freeze hand across the road. That's where it's at.
Oh. And Burns Dirt is proposing to expand their operation to dispose of, I mean, let's, let's put it this way. We're accommodating Burns Dirt because they, they're the ones doing the demolition on one-eighty-two for us. And they're doing all the demolition of those buildings when Mississippi State's tearing down and rebuilding buildings. No one, you go down and try, Burns Dirt tried to go do that in South Montgomery, see what happened. You have five hundred people up there, all in our city right there. This man and just a few of constituents, city constituents, like he said, they were in the county. We went out and annexed them. And now, we got, he's got this horrendous operation. I've been out there. Mr. Smith, by the way, if people don't remember, Milton Smith was one of the best defensive backs that played in Mississippi State. He done join you back when he played for Bulldogs. I remember those days. But he's a nice fellow. He got home out there and people next to him. And from the time of daybreak to dusk in the summertime, that's, that's the biggest part of a twenty-four hour day. They don't, they can't do anything. No pulverizing thing, no breaking up concrete, constant. None of us would want that. Thing about this, the thing we need to remember here, and I won't get too much on horse, this is my last night, is that, well, before we do something, before we allow this for our accommodation, I think what people should, should realize is, would I want that in my backyard? Would I want that across the street from me? You know? Would I want to be treated like that? And the answer to that is, no, you wouldn't. You would not want that facility doing what Burns Dirt, and it's gotta be done. But it just doesn't need to be done inside city limits. Burns Dirt will be doing that outside city limits somewhere, somewhere away from people and away from their homes. They have ruined the quiet, there's what's a legal term, you're, you're an attorney, quiet enjoyment of property. They have ruined the quiet enjoyment of this man's property, that facility. And I don't know, but a borrow pit won't be as loud or as, but it'll be dusty and it'll be a continuation of what we're doing. And, and, and we're sacrificing the quality of life of our, for several of our citizens so that we can have a place for Burns Dirt, to pulverize concrete refuse that they removed from, our road out here. And when they tear down one of Mississippi State's buildings. And I just don't think that's right. So my motion is to deny the exception for them to put in this borrow pit.
So noted. I do want to say that if the process was still in the county and we had not annexed them, they would still be doing exactly the same thing with absolutely no oversight, which means they could do it from midnight to midnight as opposed to six to, seven to nine, which is the current hours that we would like to try to hold them to, which I'm sure code enforcement will help us do that in the coming days. But the borrow pit is a whole other item. This one is, is grandfathered in. But having said that, any other, Alderman Vaughn, I see your hand.
So, Mr. Smith, right now you're under the bridge or the other?
Before the bridge, when the one he's talking about, before you get to the bridge. The borrow pit will be on the other side behind Pam Davis and Mr. Boss property.
And so the aggravation you're getting now is from what's already there?
Yes, already there. But there'll be about eighteen woods up and down the road. Still ain't gonna be no sleep.
Anything else, Alderman Vaughn? I've got Alderman, Alderman Vaughn.
Mayor, just, just go behind about Alderman Bailey. Would you want this in your neighborhood? That's all we gotta do. Ask, ask yourself that question. Would you want this in your neighborhood? Would you want this close to your house? Sometimes we gotta ask ourselves that question. Would I want this? No. And none of us want that. Wouldn't none of us want that, that, that in our back door. Wouldn't none of us want that. And you're like Alderman Bailey said, you know you ain't gonna take it down to South Montgomery. I wouldn't want it in my neighborhood. I wouldn't want it nowhere. I know they gotta go somewhere with it. But it's in the city, isn't it? Well, we grandfathered in. And we grandfathered them in and we can't protect them?
What's, what has been referenced is grandfathered in, Alderman Vaughn, is the borrow pit?
I know what you're saying. That, that...
Burns Dirt process, yeah.
I understand that.
Yeah. Okay.
That part was grandfathered in.
Yes.
So why we gonna create some more when we don't have to?
That's, that's the decision before us. Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Vaughn?
Is there, is there a reason why you didn't look in the county where it wouldn't be an issue?
Um, I, Mr. Phillips, would you like to come up here, please, sir?
Sure.
There's a question. Need some help? You good? Okay. That's okay. The question was, is there a reason that you did not look in the county for a borrow pit location?
Well, this pit is, was an existing pit. APAC used it when they built the four lane here back in the eighties. And the dirt, we, we look for dirt, specific kind of dirt. And it's just hard to find dirt in Octavia County that meets spec. This is a chalk material. The engineer on, on prospective projects we got coming has approved it. The pit's basically there. It's just, it's gonna be a, a dig out type situation when we need it.
Is there a duration to this? An expected, expected duration to this?
There is no set duration. We'll, we'll do whenever the projects are available that we, you know, that we're low on and get. We'll, we'll open a pit up and we keep it till we run out of dirt in it or, you know, have no more need for it. There's no, I can't say we'll have it for ten years or a year, you know?
All right. Alderman Brooks? I'm sorry, Alderman Vaughn, will you, did that, okay. Alderman Brooks?
Have you got an estimated number of yards in this pit? Y'all give me a number of yards?
Sir, it just depends on the, the job. We may hit. We, we, we're looking at one right now, prospective job coming. And so we're trying to line up the material for it. The, the dirt pit we have now is in, at the Alabama line, where we hauling dirt.
But, but when y'all were looking at this, you didn't get any kind of calculations, how many yards, hot potential yards, right?
This, this job we have now is maybe two-hundred thousand yards.
Two-hundred thousand yards. Okay.
Anything else, Alderman Brooks?
I'm tiptoeing.
Okay. I'll sit.
One of the levels, sir.
Yeah. We're starting out with a four acre pit. That's DQ permitted type deal. And we go eleven, twelve feet. We're going to expand the landowner's pond that he has there, what the plan is.
So two-hundred thousand yards, you're talking about ten thousand, twenty yard truck loads or something like that?
No.
Now that'd be my concern, but, but, that'd be my concern on, on the road. Certainly why it's a trouble on the road, you know? I mean, realistically, I mean, you, this particular pit will be...
Well, to be honest, the road is not built to a highway standards of county road. And it's probably gonna be torn up. But we're, we go in there and we maintain them and keep them, you know, usable. We just replaced the culvert down there by our other location for y'all the last couple weeks. But it's just a asphalt, rock, shot tight road, you know, county road.
I used to haul logs. I know about that.
Sir?
I used to haul logs.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I know what the trucks are gonna do. So that's, that's my, one of my major concerns. I, I agree.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anything else? Thank you, sir. I will let you make your way back.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask one other question, ma'am?
I'm sorry. Alderman Bailey?
Sir, tell me this. What is, what is the, what do you think the life of, of this pulverizing facility y'all have right there at Pat Station Road right across the, what's the future? I mean, how, how far in the future does that thing continue to operate?
Let me explain. We, when we demolish concrete, we bring it there and then we hire a specialty contractor to come in. When we get four, five thousand tons estimated to, to crush, it takes them a week maybe. And that's the crushing of it. To it. And then, then we'll use it up. It takes a while to use it, you know? But it's not a constant deal. DQ doesn't regulate that also. They require you to spray water when you're doing it. And I'm not saying it's always done, but it should be, should be done. Yeah, I'm sorry, it's a nuisance, but, you know, in contracting business, we are a nuisance business.
It's, 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 man, sitting back there on the second floor.
Right. Right.
On that crushing, y'all used to crush that, the, the go and try and remix, remix lot over there.
That's right. Yes.
My, my wife works over there, so I know.
Oh, okay. Right. We were doing it, yes. And they, they were having their stuff came in. They let us dump there and, yeah, but they...
Got crossed up somewhere.
Got crossed up. Well, they asked us to leave. I think they still crush a little bit.
I think they do.
Wait, wait. Alderman Brooks, you done?
Yeah, I think they still do. I've, I've got them a little bit in front of me. And that's a lot better place because it's in our industrial park, which is still discussed. That's my unit.
But you asked how long will it be there? I think there are plans for us to move off that lot in the future pretty quick. I can't tell you when. I don't know. That, that property was divided when they Burns split. I guess the two brothers that owned Burns were made divided. And so I think, I think we'll be moving off that soon, the Burns Dirt or whatever.
But y'all were doing this...
Alderman Bailey, wait. Alderman Vaughn, hands is up.
Mr. Phillips, you said that y'all wait till you get like four tons and then you crush it? Something like...
About three thousand.
I was just wondering, do you, so you can plan ahead for when you're gonna be crushing on site?
Right.
Do you think maybe we can work something out, give Mr. Smith and them a heads up? I know it's not gonna help. At least they'll know those days that you can leave your, he can leave his door closed at home versus he can kinda plan around it to some extent.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Alderman Bailey?
And y'all were in the industrial park doing this, were asked not to, asked, tell me what, why that's...
I, I don't really know the details of why we were left there. We, we, it was the industry there. They asked us to leave. I don't know why they...
I mean, I know the logistics of it now with Highway Twelve. And y'all would tear Highway Twelve up. I mean, wherever you moved this stuff to over time, those dump trucks, those big, those track trailers and those dump trucks, all that stuff, would tear, tear whatever road you use up. But I, I just, I think that there needs to be, and it is, it is part of the discussion with the me with borrow pit. This is the same company and they're asking for an exception, a permit to do something additional in this, in this general vicinity. And this, this thing is ongoing. Mr. Smith, he's had me out there a couple of times. I wouldn't want to live next to them. I wouldn't, I, I can't imagine having to live next to them and put up there. No way. I just, and I know places in town where it wouldn't be located because it wouldn't be tolerated. And I just wanted to, y'all, if there's any recourse or any, anything or any timeline on moving that thing, that, that it would give him some hope that that thing will always be out there in front of his house.
Well, I will do my best to find out what our plans are. I'm not the owner. I work there, but I will check with them and I'll let y'all know what our plans are.
Could y'all be, can I stop contesting Mr. Smith, too? I know he, he, I won't, Mr. Smith, I won't speak too much, but I just say, I know you, you'd like to be, been kept in... Uh, no, he, he, I won't, Mr. Smith, I won't speak too much, but I just say, I know you, you'd like to be, been kept in, in that loop, right?
Yes, I, I love know what's going on. We see, we know when, when the, when the trucks come in to crush. We see them come in when they're gonna crush. They're not far out from coming in near short. When they stop by, I'll just hear that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thanks.
Appreciate you coming back up. All right. There's no further discussion? I have a motion to deny. Um, if you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Moreland?
Yea.
Alderman Rupp?
Yea.
Alderman Brooks?
Yea.
Alderman Bailey?
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
All right. That is, that particular item, that special exception has been denied. Okay. All right. Next, we have a public hearing in consideration for lot mowings, uh, one twenty-nine D Helen and eight-ten South Jackson. Sergeant Crotters?
Lead the mayor, vice mayor, board. I come tonight to, uh, present public hearing for municipal code twenty-one nineteen-eleven, and it's a lot mowing. The two pla, two locations I have are one twenty-nine D Helen Circle and, excuse me, eight-ten South Jackson Street. This photo was taken from, uh, one twenty-nine Helen Circle on, uh, June tenth, when I opened the case. And today, when I went through and checked, it was still, had not been mowed. So there's no changes happening. And in South Jackson, excuse me, ten, one, eight-ten South Jackson, um, there was, when I opened the case, it was very overgrown. This was taken on June tenth. The, the, uh, owner had mowed it, but still had some, uh, large stuff he had to get rid of. But as of this morning, uh, everything has been cleaned up.
All right. Thank you. Any questions of Sergeant Crotters while we, before I open this public hearing? All right. Seeing none, I'll open this item as a public hearing. This, this is related to twenty-one nineteen-eleven regarding mowings at one twenty-nine D Helen Circle and eight-ten South Jackson Street. Anyone wishing to speak to this item, now would be the time. All right. Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Say mine.
I have a motion from Alderman Moreland. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Rupp? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Um, and next, we have, uh, twenty-one nineteen-eleven property located at two fifty-six Sand Road.
Twenty-one nineteen-eleven for, uh, two fifty-six Sand Road, parcel number one zero five dash one six dash zero two two point zero three. Uh, tax documents show this, uh, property belongs to Dennis Ward Senior. On May twentieth, initial inspection was done by myself at this, at this, uh, address, twenty-five, uh, two fifty-six Sand Road. Uh, photos were taken from view of the public, of the city street. As you see, it's got substantial overgrowth. Uh, it actually is two, uh, separate buildings on this one property. A notice of violation was, was sent, uh, following the inspection on May twenty-seventh. A public hearing notice was mailed to the property owner on May, May thirtieth. Uh, and the, uh, public hearing was posted here at City Hall on May thirtieth and on the property, and on the property the same day. Administrative inspection warrant was signed by Judge Kelly on May thirtieth. And it was executed by myself and building officials, Stephen McMullen, on that same day. And, uh, we were unable to actually go into the residence or into the buildings for safety reasons. And I don't know if you can scale to the front of it. On this, the one to the left, the, the top, the roof is actually caved in. You see the, the V right there? And this is on the second building in the back. You tell on the, that's, on the south end of this, on this house, the, uh, roof is caved in. And this is on the north side of the house. Uh, June ninth, I went back to re-inspect the property and showed no, uh, change at that time.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any questions of Sergeant Crotters before I open this a public hearing?
Yes.
Alden Brooks?
Do, do we know if this property, I mean, this is under the sixth section property we just discussed, is this still under lease? Do we know that?
Uh, this is owned by Mr. Ward, who's here. I don't know.
Okay. All right.
Okay. All right. Any other, he feels? All right. Let me open it as a public hearing. Oh, the owner is here? Is that what you said? Mr. Ward? Would you like to come forward, sir?
Everybody.
Yes, sir.
Uh, my name is Ward Junior.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I want to speak for my dad. Uh, we want to ask, can we have like an extension, probably for three reasons? A lot of this rain that's going on right now. And then also, there's a pipe that's with the city that's constantly busting and flooding it, where you can't get in and cut the grass or do anything. And also, I would like to talk to, uh, the chief, uh, of the fire department, so we can maybe do a control burn, to burn one of the houses down. In the mobile home, we gonna have somebody to come in and just carry it down and, uh, get it moved out.
Okay, hang on just a second. Uh, Chief Davis? Have you been out to this side? Do you know, is this, is this eligible for potential burning? Okay. So that would be a no? Okay, thank you. Um, okay, just, hang on just a second. Um, so, did you say a busted water pipe?
Yeah, it's constantly being bu, I mean, it's constantly buzzed. They'll come and soak off, fix it, but it would flood the whole area where you came in. They just recently, uh, fixed the, the entrance part because the, uh, water had sort of, you know, collapsed the entrance. But again, it's consistent, but.
Okay, so you are, well, I'm sorry. Alderman Vaughn, did you wanna ask a question?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Uh, three weeks, I believe, I'll be getting it done in three weeks.
Uh-uh. I was saying about three months. At least give me a, I mean, give enough time to be able to, uh, dry a little bit so you may get in there and cut.
I think what he said was three reasons.
He said three weeks, but I.
I said three reasons. I had three reasons.
Three reasons, city.
Yeah.
Um, so, I'm compelled to ask you why it has gotten in this shape? Why have y'all let it get in this shape to begin with?
Yep. Uh, well, we got a lot of things going on. I've been working a lot and, uh, and hardly been able to get down there.
Yes, well, that's been that way for quite some time.
It has been. Uh, my, my pops was sick, so I've been having to, hadn't been able to get out there as much. So if we get a, about a three or four month extension, it'd, it'd look like a whole different place.
Any other questions before I open it as a public hearing? Okay, if you would step back, let me open it as a public hearing. Right. Anyone wishing to speak to this particular item, tw, two fifty-six Sand Road? Either for or against declaring it as twenty-one nineteen-eleven? Either for or against? Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Um, discussion from the board? Any, do I have a motion? Alderman Vaughn?
May I make a motion to, we, you'll give him four months instead of three weeks that I want, that I want to.
You wanna give him four months to get it?
Yes, ma'am.
And what condition do you think it should be in within four months?
Um, clean.
Clean as in the building's gone and mowed and, okay.
That's what he said.
And at the end of that four months, are you, uh, making, as part of your motion, that we then go in under twenty-one nineteen-eleven and clean it for it?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so, um, I mean, that, just wanted to be clear. Okay, so at the, at the end of four months, if it's not cleaned up, which means the buildings are gone, the lot's cleaned up and cleared? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Goodness, I have three of them.
I'll beat them though.
Okay.
Because, because I got, I have a second. Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir. Alden Bailey, go ahead.
Um, what, uh, chief, uh, on the fire, on the control burn? It has asbestos in it?
They don't know, 'cause they haven't gotten in.
But, so can we enter the building to test it?
That's the condition of the building.
Yeah.
The condition.
Yeah. There's, it's unsafe and so that's still, but we still can go in to manage this based on that unsafe condition. Obviously, he thinks he can do that. It's his, so, you know, for the four months that he's given.
So how, how do we, how did, they proposed to demolish and remove a building that has, that may have asbestos in it? It's gotta be tested before you can, can, can demolish?
Well, that would be a combination of, uh, Mr. McMullen and Chris Black. And we would work to try to get some of that. Alden, Aldman Moreland?
I believe once he gets in and starts cleaning it up, it might be possible to gain access to that structure, once he gets in. And we can revisit.
It's a sa, it's a matter of safety of actually getting access to it.
If it doesn't have asbestos, the fire truck's parked down.
Well, that depends on, that depends on how all that's laid out there, and that's up to them entirely. So, cut. All right. Alderman Vaughn, I'll see your, are you wanting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's depending on the rain, depending on whether fire, the, the chief of, fire chief.
Yes, yes. Okay. Um, so I have a motion and a second for four months, at which the end of time, we take over from there. All right. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. This, did, did you understand that? Did you understand that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. Uh, we have public hearing in consideration under twenty-one nineteen-eleven, whether the property at fifteen ninety-one Sand Road is administered to public health safety.
Okay. The property fifteen ninety-one Sand Road, uh, parcel number one zero five dash one six dash zero two two point zero one. This property is owned by, uh, Starkville School District, Starkville, October County, Starkville, October County School District. The property, like when I pulled it up, shows that, um, it belongs to a Jerry Ward, uh, who was actually dating him at one time. But everything that I have found from the tax office and everything else shows that it still is under the name of October County School District.
Deduct form, just.
Different.
He's out in the hallway.
Oh, all right.
Um, because, ma'am, e, e, everything else I have found says it belongs to Starkville, October County School District.
Okay.
Uh, I actually spoke with, uh, representative from the, from that office, from the, uh, sixth section properties office, and she confirmed that it is there.
Okay. And did we talk to them about cleaning it up?
The school district?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
And they responded?
From what I understood, they were going to try, um, but she actually said she was gonna be here tonight to, to discuss that some too.
Okay. Okay. Sorry, go ahead. I apologize.
Yeah, on May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, uh, conducted initial inspection, uh, done at twenty, uh, fifteen ninety-one Sand Road. Uh, photos were taken from the public, public view of city street. Uh, about, notice of violation was issued on May twenty-seventh. Public hearing notice was mailed to the property owner, um, on May thirtieth. And it was posted on City Hall, uh, posted here at City Hall on May thirtieth. Public hearing. And public hearing notice was posted on the property, uh, on May thirtieth. The administrative inspection warrant was signed by Judge Kelly on May thirtieth. And executed by myself and building officials, Stephen McMullen, the same day. You tell that these, these pictures here, uh, show that the, the house has been burnt from the, on the inside.
So it's not occupied, right?
No, it isn't.
Despite all the vehicles out front?
It is not occupied. And there's a, there is. And on June the ninth, I conducted a re-inspection of the property, showing that nothing had been changed. But yes, no, it is not occupied.
Okay. Well, it didn't look like it should be, it's just I saw all the vehicles out, out front there. So, um, are we, are those vehicles operable? Are they, do they come and go?
From what I understand.
Is it parking area? No.
Uh, from what I understand, they belong to the neighbor. Um, I, I've spoken with, with his wife, and that's, that's who told me that they, they belong to, when I ran the tags, they came back to him as well.
Okay, and you've been, you haven't been in contact with the owner themselves, or the, the name that was on, originally listed? You don't have been in contact with the school district?
School district.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions of Sergeant Crotters? Any questions? All right. Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna open it as a public hearing. If you'd like to come speak, now would be the opportunity. Yes, sir. So it is an open, open as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to, for, against? Yes, sir. And your name?
My name is Patrick Clayburn. All those vehicles that you saw belongs to me and I live next door to it?
Yes, sir.
I'm glad to hear that you all are trying to clean up Starkville, our neighborhood. I'd like to get the, the purchase that, or lease it. Once y'all get it cleaned up and keep it clean, 'cause I live next door to it. And, uh, that was my main concern. Each one of those vehicles does work in there in a proper spot now, but, uh, that's my main concern is leasing the land. And they say you had to come in front of the board. Back in the eighties, you didn't come in front of the board, you went before the school and, and that's my main concern.
All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak to this matter? Anyone either for or against? Dr. Moore? Yes, sir.
Um, of course, um, this falls on me. This is what I've been back for before you guys a few months ago. Um, definitely, this is one of the, one of the issues that I inherited. This is one of the things that we're doing, um, is trying to, um, police all of the property that's currently leased to make sure that it's in. Um, of course, we can't get out all of them and. Thank you. For the city that's helping us do it. But we have been in contact. Uh, my office has been in contact with the city when we got this notice. And we are in the process of getting this rectified.
Okay, so y'all are gonna clean it up?
We are contacting. We have not, we have not gotten the person who had the lease prior to it. It's now in our possession, right, due to delinquency, right? We have been doing our research to try to get in contact with the person who was the last person to have this lease, right? And so, if we cannot, it is gonna fall upon us to clean this property.
Okay.
And so, um.
You want us to do it for you and bill you?
Um, I don't think so. Um, I, I don't, I don't know.
We're a pretty good deal.
I don't know for sure right now, right? I think that's a conversation we might need to have to see if you, which will come out the cheapest, right? But, um, definitely, I want to have that conversation, um, but that's where we are right now.
Okay, so.
We are in the process of, we've identified who it belonged to last.
Yes.
We've made some telephone calls. We have not been successful in getting, getting that particular person. Um, and so, we, we're trying to, um, contact the person that knows a person that knows a person to, to try to chase the rabbit down.
Yes.
But ultimately, yes, it will fall upon us.
Okay.
And if we cannot do what we need to do, then how different, we'll come back and see what that, what that price tag will be.
In, in the consideration of how the board functions, and the board can certainly function how, how it wants to, but normally, we give the owner some time. So I'm in, in preparation for perhaps this discussion, how much time would you like?
Um, can I have three months? Four months? Give me four months. Give me, I'll change that. Give me four months.
Do I hear two?
Right?
All right.
Give me four months, you know? Uh, my plan is, you know, hopefully get it done prior to that, but that will definitely give me enough time. And if I need to come and sit down and talk with you all prior to that, you know, we'll do.
What, what we'll do, and I didn't mean to make this a bidding war, I just wanted to kinda get a feel for what you, what you've thought about it. So we will, we will, I will, at some point here, in just a second, close it as a public hearing, and then we'll go into that level of discussion.
Understood.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak to this? All right. Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Um, so, um, Alderman Vaughn, would you like to, this is your ward. Would you like to give the, the gentleman four months?
Yes, ma'am. We approve four months.
So, um, now, at the end of this four months, do you want to have us clean it up, or would you like?
At the end of four months, he gonna come back to you if we ain't got there, if he haven't got there.
Okay. All right, so that gives you a little bit different deal than the other gentleman had. Okay. So I have a motion, I'm sorry, I'll, Vice Mayor Perkins?
Mayor, um, I'm, yeah.
No, I don't have a second yet. Let me, may I get a second? Do I have a second? All right, Alden Rupp, now, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Mayor, I'm gonna support the, um, the motions offered by the gentleman from seven. Uh, given the, um, condition of this property, I would personally like to see the, the, um, the minutes reflect that if this property is not cleaned up in the entirety, as we did the previous request. Um, the. not cleaned up in the entirety, as we did the previous requests, the record should not be open for the school district to come and negotiate with you for some additional time. In other words, it needs to be really clear. I mean, four months is a hundred and twenty days. And Mr. Barnes, the official from the the school district, doing a great job. But at the same time, our responsibility is to ensure that we require these property owners to keep the property real clean, and the property is really a deplorable situation. It's it's a state of uncleanness. So the point I'm making is, and gentlemen, I support the motion, but I just want to say for the record, I think if and hopefully the record will reflect this, if it's not cleaned up in four months, we just need to go in and clean it up and bill the the prop donor. So that will be consistent with what we've done tonight. Now, you, Mayor.
It would be Vice Mayor, that's not how I understood Alden Vaughn's motion. Alden Vaughn, would you like to offer an amendment or reflect a change to your motion?
No, ma'am, I don't wanna reflect no change to it, because he said if they had updated in four months, he would come back and let you know that, clean it up for.
Okay, so at the end of four months, he will come back and let me know. So Sergeant Purge will have to check on it. He will come back and let me know.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, at which point in time we will clean it up? Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I'm gonna support the motion from the gentleman from seven, but and and this is no disrespect to anyone. You know, the property needs to be cleaned up without giving somebody a second chance, but gentlemen, I'm for you, but I'm just this is just going to the property owner. That's who I'm speaking to. I mean, I can be viewed as being hard, that's just my culture. I mean, we need to keep this city clean. I mean, and I'm and gentlemen, I'm supporting the motion, but you know, the the school district wants an exception here, but as we move forward, I'm gonna support the motion, as mayor, but if we move forward, we need to require these prop donors that we give them four months, then they want some more time, they wanna come to City Hall and talk to you, and they want some more time. So hopefully, this will be done in four months, and the official's been doing a great job. Gentlemen, thank you for your support of the district, but I just wanted to send that message to the district, so hopefully, you know, and the staff is doing a great job, and and we need to keep the city clean. I mean, that's the only way we're gonna do it. We we got to require strict compliance, but I'm gonna support the motion. You, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, I have a motion and a second. Without further discussion, if you would, please, everyone, anyone in favor, please answer. No, we don't have to do this, do we? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Sorry, I was going into an entirely different mode. All right, last public hearing, and this is for fourteen sixty Bluefield Road, for twenty-one nineteen eleven, for cleanup of the property. Sergeant Coruthers.
And I'll gladly go back and check that.
I'm sorry?
I said I'll gladly go back and check.
I know you will. I'm just I was just saying that that'd be one of those things we'll be watching, so thank you, sir.
This is public hearing for fourteen sixty Bluefield Road, parcel number one zero three oh dash zero eight dash zero one four dot point zero zero. Tax documents showing this property belongs to a Rodney Pope. On May fourteenth, an initial inspection was done at fourteen sixty Bluefield Road by myself. Photos were taken from public public view of C Street. A notice of violation was mailed after the first inspection on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, and public hearing notice was mailed to the property owner on May sixteenth. Public hearing notice was posted on on the property and here at City Hall on May sixteen. Administrative inspection warrant signed by Judge Kelly on May twenty-second. And executed by myself and building official Steve McMullen on the same day. It's on the left, so there's a sagging seat and a roof above the door here. This this is the doorway leading into the into the house. It appears that there's nothing there in the doorway. From what I can see, I can see the ground. Everyone's looking at that. There's a gap in the door. It's not shutting all the way. This is the back of the house. This is the dark photo down on the left, down towards the bottom. That appears to be missing and rotted out. It's like on the wall right there. And on May, excuse me, June ninth, twenty twenty-five, I did a reinspection of the property and showed that there was no change in places appropriate.
And this one does have an individual?
Yes, sir. It it does have someone living. Yes, it does. Any questions? Alden Vaughn, this is the gentleman with whom you have had contact, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Any questions of, okay, is the gentleman here today?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Mr. Pope?
Good evening. My name is Rodney Pope.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we're planning on tearing it down.
You are planning on tearing it down?
Yeah.
Okay, and when would you be doing that, sir?
We're kinda waiting on the funds, get everything together, my family, and that's our plan.
Okay, are you are you looking at having the fire department do a control burn for you?
I hadn't thought about that, but I can look into that.
Okay, all right, well, that'd be one of the things to get with Fire Chief Vaughn. Any questions of Mr. Pope? All right, I need to open it as a public hearing.
Okay.
So I will do that, sir, and then we will we will close it and then come back into discussion with the board, okay?
Okay.
Anyone wishing to speak to this matter? I'll open it as a public hearing on the location of fourteen sixty Bluefield Road. It's a twenty-one nineteen eleven dilapidated structure. Anyone? Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing, and we can have this discussion. Alden Vaughn, in having spoken with Mr. Pope, do do you have any idea what length of time he was requesting, or did y'all talk about that?
Four months, four months, ma'am.
Four months? Mr. Pope, I'm sorry, come back up and and let's make sure that 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 is something that's clear for you. Is this something you believe Alden Vaughn is suggesting that he give you four months to get it torn down, or in this case, perhaps a co- control burn?
Probably six months.
Okay, that's. Alden Vaughn, do you wanna make a?
Yes, ma'am. May I make make a motion to give him six months to get his stuff together?
Okay, Alden Vaughn is making a motion to give you six months to get that torn down and cleaned up.
Okay.
Pope, do I have a second to that motion?
Okay.
I have a second from Alden Moreland. Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? And at the end of that six month, Alden Vaughn, we're going to go in and and take take care of it ourselves?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, no other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, and now we move on to board business. We have discussion consideration of a resolution to the ingress, I'm sorry, egress and ingress of Touch of Love Barber and Beauty Salon at two forty-nine Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. Alden Beatty, this was your agenda item.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, I would like to propose that the city propose a motion that city provide ingress and ingress ingress and egress to the Touch of Love Barber Shop Barber and Beauty Salon at two forty-nine Martin Luther King Jr. Drive from Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, which is old Highway eighty-two. In light of the comments Mr. Johnson's made, one of which I had paid attention to. I was in Memphis today, and had lunch with my son, Chalk, who's on Highland Avenue, I thought University of Memphis County. And that whole section of Highland Avenue, it was completely redone by Kenley Horn. And it's got this building, it's simply got this rusted in its own corner lot, Side Street crosses Highland Avenue, and there's entrances on both sides of that development, on Highland Avenue side and on Side Street side, and they couldn't operate without it. I've noticed when I've been up there that it doesn't matter throughout throughout the central part of Memphis, whether you're on Union, Central Avenue, or Pop, or Cooper, or, you know, Madison, or whatever those main roads, businesses locate on corner lots. Main one percent access from both from from both two roads. Mr. Johnson's had access from both Highway one eighty-two, US eighty-two, and then Highway one eighty-two, Martin Luther King Jr. Drive now, and what's the Side Street?
Ernest Jones.
Ernest Jones. Since you since your business been open?
Ernest Jones.
Ninety-nine, ninety-four. I do think it will have material effect on your business going forward. And I do think as a city, that we're redeveloping that part of town, that's a beautiful streetscape we're putting in, but someone's business should not be inhibited or damaged. You know, must want to look we want to look good, at the same time, we want to function. Part of functioning is providing access. We're not making it better for them. All we be doing is just putting it back like it was, and and making them whole by giving them an access way off of Highway one eighty-two like it is off of Ernest Jones, Ernest Jones Street. So my motion is that we that propose that we provide that access to Mr. Johnson's business from Highway one eighty-two.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alden Vaughn. Discussion. Alden Sister.
I I think it's been apparent tonight that where we can, we give every consideration to an individual's request, but but we must weigh those individual requests against the community interest. So I wanted to make a few comments about that. This design was was our best effort to ensure the safety of vehicles and pedestrians bicyclists as that area redevelops and as that area is used in a way that's different than it's been used in in the past. It's done in compliance with our access management policy, and it was approved by MDOT. The area under consideration is complicated by its location, its its proximity to that red light and the hill, which causes sight issues at various points in the day with the sun being in people's eyes. So that's those are things we know about that particular that particular area. What we don't know about that area is whether MDOT will approve a change at this point in time. We don't know what it would cost, and it would absolutely certainly have to be borne completely by the city. MDOT will not give us additional funds to to cover this cost, and we don't know what the timeframe will be. That that is particularly important because these grants that are funding this particular project are on a very tight timeline, and if we miss a timeline, if we miss a a date on that project, we lose those funds. We also don't know the impact up and down that entire project in terms of cost and time, as other businesses might use this as precedent and ask that their their areas be changed as well. So with all that said, I I have been by, and and I think your parking lot looks really nice now, and I think you've gained some parking places, which I would think would be would be good for you. But all that said, I I cannot tonight vote for this. Too many unknowns, too many unknowns, and and I think that we have to weigh the interest of the community against the interest of the individual.
Any other comments? All right, I am going to say one thing that, and Alden Beatty is certainly, you know, welcome to his opinion, but never, never, never was this project a beautification project. It was an infrastructure project, it was a stormwater project, it was a water and sewer project, which is why we dug down twenty-four feet or more to lay whole new sewer lines. Beautification is the cherry on top of the sundae in terms of landscaping and that sort of thing, but it was transportation, it was safety, it was infrastructure, and so never would we spend forty-three million dollars for beautification. So that has never been the case, certainly not from my perspective and not from the grant language which we put forward. It was always an infrastructure and safety project. So I say that to just be clear on what I perceive is is perhaps a misunderstanding of the intent of that grant. So anyway, anyone else? Alden Vaughn?
My my main concern is when we come up come up one eighty-two Mal Luther King, we come to the corner store of D L Connor and one eighty-two of Mal Luther King. On D L on D L Connor, it's two, one in and one out. It's two it's two ingresses over there, and then you got one around one eighty-two, you got one there. So they say you gonna close the one on one eighty on D L Connor, you gonna close one of those. But the intersection, to me, is the same. It's the same up there at at Ernest Jones and one eighty-two. It's the same intersection. You got a red light here, and Love, he had he had one, he had one off one coming off of D L Connor, off of Ernest Jones, and he had one coming off of one eighty-two. So you you gonna close the one on D L Connor that I hear, but you gonna give him you gonna leave the one open to one eighty-two. That got me confused. I'm very confused about that. It's the same intersection, same red light, and but and and Love, when the one he got to go out, he come you coming out on a blind side, 'cause I come out of the day when I got my hair cut. I had to pull all the way into the road, and they say we were gonna cut the hill down, but none of that been done. But I can't it it we we playing we playing favoritism to me right now, because it's the same same intersection, but different locations. Same intersection, but different location.
Alden Moreland?
Is this the property right there where the old gas station happens to be?
What about now?
Oh, D L Connor at one eighty-two, my property. If it would have come to me, I would say right now we can close that entrance, because that is how important this project is to the city of Starkville. And like Alden Beatty said, and just so you know, that used to be two entrances, by the way, it did get closed down the last time, and also gave the city an easement to complete the project, when other property owners would not agree to it. And Alden Beatty said that he cannot, in good faith, let Mr. Love's business, and I understand that, and Mr. Love, I don't think you understand the impact you have on this community. People are coming to you regardless. You have been an upstanding citizen in this community, and so many people in this town respect you, not just that you're great at what you do, but as a community leader, and I appreciate you for that. But I can't in good faith let the rest of one eighty-two be put in jeopardy with the stormwater, with the flooding, and we know after this last rain, the flooding that we got on that corner. I cannot in good faith let every other business be... How do I work this? I can't let everybody else be put at risk, for one, and I know that's unfortunately, but if they would have come to me, I would have told them to close my entrance, because that is how important this project is for the overall one eighty-two. Like Starkville needs this, and I do not want to jeopardize the grant money for any reason whatsoever, because we as a city cannot afford it any other way, and we need all of that infrastructure, and you know that, just like everybody on this board knows, infrastructure is key for this town right now, and for our future growth, and I would not jeopardize one thing for that.
Man, Alden Vaughn, and then and then, Detective Chair, you said MDOT, MDOT turned this over to the city, so what would MDOT have to make of the city about? Because they turned they turned it all the way from Beatty Street to Old West Point Run over to the city, so why would MDOT have to make a make a call on this if we did do it?
Because of the grant money that's being used to make that to to build this entire project. They still have they still have control of the grant funding. The Federal Highway Administration and MDOT is where we get those funds.
Mayor.
Alden Beatty.
Isn't a substantial amount of money now that's involved in completing this project, a direct earmark from Roger Whipper's office, nineteen million, that has no strings.
We haven't received it yet.
But I mean, it's not a string, it's not a grant, it's not a grant in the sense that it has a local match and requirements only like a grant, is that correct?
Well, as far as I know, it is it is direct funding for this project, but it is to complete this project. So I don't know, and the answer is I don't know, because we haven't seen it yet.
But to be clear, if it comes through, it's an earmark. We used to call it, it's an earmark. So it won't have strings attached to it like competitive grant would have, where you could where you write an application and awarded a grant based on criteria that 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 puts. that puts you at, that, you know, at the height, you know, where you can, you award the grant, one of those being a local match, and we have local match, we're in, in our, in the first fifteen million that we got, the first twelve and a half million, and we've got a, a middle tax, it's, it's funding part of this now, you know, from a local standpoint, it was part of the thing, but, uh, it, but the large part of this money now will be a, a direct earmark, and, and to your credit, we went to Washington, got it.
Well, again.
But it's a different, it's a different kind of money.
Well, it may be, but we don't know yet, because we haven't gotten it. All we've gotten is the, is the knowledge that it's in the budget, but the budget is right now on hold, so we don't even know if we've got it.
What happens, product, we don't get that, nothing.
We're, that is one of those things that we're having to look at, is how we would wind it down. All right, Alderman Sisdrunk, and then Alderman Vaughn.
Um, I, I, I just wanted to clarify a bit about that. We did do a grant application for this additional money. It was a raise grant, and, am I right about that?
Yes.
And, and it's my understanding, although I could certainly be wrong, it's my understanding that the build grant and the raise grant will be commingled and those funds tied together, and so, if we endanger one part of it, we potentially endanger all of it.
I can't speak to that, because I just haven't seen the language that goes with it.
But, but it is a grant.
Yeah. Alderman Vaughn.
Okay. Lee, Lee Love, I'm gonna leave Love and go over to Max Meat. Max Meat had a, had a ingress coming off of one eighty-two, had two on Long Street. You close the one on one eighty-two, they have to lose, use the two on Long Street. It's, I, I mean, it's just, it, it, it got confusing me. It's the same scenario, they live down on D L Connor, one eighty-two, it's the same thing, it's the same thing, but different peoples. Same scenario, but different peoples.
Well, I'm gonna give you what I know about that one, Alderman Vaughn, because the second entrance into Max is outside the scope of this grant and this project. Is that correct, Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
So we didn't, we weren't in a position to close that second entrance off of there, it didn't fall under the grant constraints. Okay?
So, we have caused a lot of hardship on Max Meat and, and Larry Love. We have caused a lot of hardship. Although, you, you, you know who, who loves this project more than I do? Because it was something that I, 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 revitalization of, of one eighty-two, two thousand nine, when I first became Alderman. Who, 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 who loves this project more than I do? But I just would rather see it be done fair. But I know all the time, we get on down the line, if we, this issue gonna come up again. There gonna be some more people getting access to one eighty-two, on down the line.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, uh, I have a motion, and I have a second. Um, any, no other discussion, if you would please answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Moreland.
Nay.
Alderman Rupp.
Nay.
Alderman Brooks.
Nay.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Alderman Sisdrunk.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, by a vote of four to three, the motion carries. All right, moving along, we have, uh, under Community Development and Planning Department, we have consideration of approving a food exception for the proposed pickleball recreation facility at one hundred Airport Road. Yes, Mr., Mr. McCaskey?
All right, so I, I think we, I'd have briefly do this, so essentially, the, um, this facility going out on Airport Road currently is undergoing architecture review, then they've not undergone site plan review, so, um, this would be to get past, uh, the, uh, food requirement and with sale of alcohol. Essentially, they're looking at doing a pickleball facility, not having like a full kitchen, they're instead serving just drinks as a, as a side out.
Okay, so this is much the same that we went through when we had a site on industrial Park Road, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, this is a different location, same scenario, different location?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any questions of Mr. McCaskey?
Motion approved.
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Rupp.
Second.
A second from Alderman Moreland. I believe the applicant is in the, is in the audience. Do you have anything you wish to say?
Uh, no, this is, um.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
I just wanted, I wanted to offer you the opportunity. Yes, okay, all right.
Mayor, mayor, if you have approval for the suggested motion, because the current timeframe will put them at six months, and the building will be there in six months.
Okay. How, how should it be worded in order to achieve this, Mr. McCaskey?
In order for it to be done correctly, I'd like the suggested motion, it should be six months upon a certificate of occupancy being issued, because right now, they won't be there in six months.
Okay. There, there are building and building, so six months from the certificate of occup, occupancy issuance.
Yeah.
All right, so, and that's clear of Alderman Moreland for you?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, motion carries. All right, we have a claim stocket. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Alderman Sisdrunk. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Alderman Rupp.
Not a last one.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion carries, thank you. And that does take us to the end of our agenda, and the last of our opportunity to visit with our, our exiting Alderman. So, thank you again for all the work you did. I will lead the call for a work session, which is in accordance with notices acquired under Mississippi Code annotated twenty-five forty-one thirteen. The board will have a work session on Friday, the twenty-seventh of June, twenty twenty-five, at eleven AM. That meeting will be held at City Hall in the second floor conference room located at one-ten West Main. Notice should be provided of this work session within one hour of this meeting by posting such notice at City Hall. The notice for the work session should be made a part of the minutes of the board meeting, and it will be an open public meeting of the city of Starkville, and the public and press are invited to attend. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Will move.
Thank you, Alderman Vaughn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Beatty. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.